Call the meeting in county council order, please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We said that already, Mrs.
I'm on thirty second delay.
All right, welcome everybody, thank you for attending. Optional prayer, do you have one, Mr.?
Yes, I do, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Prejudice, hate, war, and struggle for power have always been in existence, but we can try in our lives to strengthen the good. We struggle, but help us in our small space in the world to be as you would want us to be. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here. Hearing in the public, nobody called in to speak at this particular meeting. If there's anybody that wishes to address council tonight, please come to the lecture. We'll get everybody that wants to speak tonight. When you reach, if you could just give me the name and municipality, you're welcome to go ahead. If you could give the name and municipality which you live, then you'll have three minutes to address council. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Heidi Meyer, M-E-Y-E-R. I am from Northeast. I'm an attorney and an HR professional with over seventeen years of employment law experience. I was also the investigator and office coordinator for the Human Relations Commission for nearly seven years, so I might look familiar to some of you. I've sat by and watched what's been happening with the council. When I vacated my position, I watched while council tried to hire my replacement without the commission members. You all appointed the commission members, you're supposed to trust them and trust their experience and their knowledge of the HRC. But you tried to put somebody in there, but eventually you did the right thing and you went through the procedures, and I feel like we got the right person in that position. But then I watched as you changed the rules for this hiring process so that you guys had completely control over who was going to be put into those positions, rather than trusting the commission. And when I see now that you're trying to hire Attorney Logue, even though he's not even one of the top three people that your hiring committee that you chose, chose for the position, and you're trying to say, well, the reason for that is because he's the only one who has five years supervisory experience. If you look at the job posting, nowhere in there does it say five years supervisory experience. It says administrative experience, but it also leaves open the equivalency so that someone who has the equivalent skills and knowledge and education and experience could also fulfill those requirements. All applications go to your HR department. They are tasked with looking to make sure that the applicants they send to you meet the qualifications. So you've had HR professionals tell you that all the applicants that were sent to you that the hiring committee interviewed meet the qualifications. So I see your excuses to hire Mr. Logue as pretext. The person that your hiring committee has brought to you that is chosen is in a protected class. I'm a concerned citizen as a taxpayer, this process has already cost the taxpayers money having to pay a settlement to Mr. Gulya, just so that you can put the person that a few of you want in there because he's your friend. We have a better qualified person who was chosen by the hiring committee, and I think it's counterproductive to put Mr. Logue in there instead, and I think it's a hazard because I can see lawsuits coming. Also, the position that you posted was for a director position. Now I see that your resolution is for an executive director. You've increased the pay, and you've increased what you have to budget now because you're not just taking the $7,000 out of the solicitor budget, now you're putting an additional $7,000 to Mr. Logue just because he's an attorney, when you rewrote the position so that you didn't have to have an attorney. So you're handpicking him, you're handpaying him. I think you should repost the job, the way that you are going to pay for the job, and the qualifications that you're looking for, and the duties that you think should be assigned, because people like me would have applied for the job had you not posted that it was only $44,000 a year. If you intend to pay closer to 55, 53, 54, what you were paying Mr. Gulya after he'd been here for twelve years?
Heidi, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
I gave you an extra eleven seconds. I was thinking about some of the things you said. I apologize for cutting you off.
Thank you, sir. If you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight? Okay, see no one come forward. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 30th regular meeting? Moved by Mr. Leon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Are there any corrections or additions to those meeting minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Reports of county officials, the county executive and/or her designee, if they wish to make any kind of report? Thank you, Mr. Sparber. And I didn't ask any members of council wish to make any kind of report tonight. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Chairman Faust. Good evening. I don't even quite know where to even begin, so I'll first say that I thank God, for I know that there's safety for me in acknowledging that this still is the day that the Lord has made. And even with everything seemingly crashing down all around me, I sometimes have to remind myself of that. But I thank my colleagues, whom I believe all genuinely come here to serve, and I believe they all love this county. That said, I believe we all come here and do our best to represent our constituents who live in our prospective districts, and in fact, the entire county. We all take an oath of office, we raise our hands to God Almighty, we're swearing, even affirming, that we will carry out the responsibility and duties of that office. And in that oath, it says a lot of things explicitly, probably, and some things it simply implies. It implies, I believe, that people that we represent expect us to be knowledgeable, competent, responsible, impartial, and fair in all of our deliberations, especially when it comes to people. And especially, in this case, when it comes to this office, the Human Relations Commission. This office should represent fairness, impartiality, non-discrimination, it shouldn't be, it should be unbiased, and it should have a commission, independent in its deliberations, even from the director, and yes, even from this office. This office should be supervised by our chief clerk to ensure that we never, ever, ever go back to a place that we are exiting from, a place of ambiguity, and I won't even elaborate more on that. But with respect to the candidates for both positions, that of the director and of the administrative position, we really had some quality candidates, we had great candidates. Well, let me just back up a minute. I was asked to serve on a subcommittee and to bring back recommendations after conducting interviews. There were sixteen applicants for the administrative position, and there were six for the director's position. The administrative pool was quickly whittled down to six candidates that were to be invited and were in fact interviewed, and all six director applicants were invited. Five were interviewed, the sixth stated that she couldn't be there, she was out of town for personal reasons. The committee had a list of questions that were used as a guide to maintain a certain line of uniformity in the questions each applicant would be asked. We, the committee, were provided resumes prior to the interview dates. We reviewed the resumes, candidates came in. Our schedule, each candidate was invited into the room, given an opportunity to express why they were interested in the position, what they bring to it, what experience, what their vision, and one of the most important things to this body was identified by this body in its entirety, before the job was even posted, was that intent that whoever we hired would focus on this office. We asked directly, solely of their intent to work in other areas. Let me say this, this was of particular interest because although the last director was a lawyer, there is no requirement to be a lawyer to hold this position. This position has been held in the past by individuals who in fact were not lawyers, nor were they required to be so. All of the interviews were conducted, and the committee chair was authorized to see what it would take and what was permissible to offer the committee's unanimous recommended nominee for the director's position, and what it would take for that candidate to accept the position. We were being mindful that they were already a county employee and of the recently implemented pay scale plan that the county just implemented. The administration position was also unanimous. We chose this candidate to be brought forth to the body, and I note that this candidate also was a very fine candidate for the director's position as well, and was found to be very competent, and was a strong candidate in my mind for either position. So I thank all who applied, and it was a privilege for me to serve. The committee polled for both positions and put forth our recommendations as expeditiously as possible to the board in its entirety. Immediately, the committee's nominee was rejected without asking a single question. My colleagues blurted, "We are not approving her, why wasn't Tony Logue chosen?" "I'm not voting for anyone," and I quote, "except Tony Logue." A second colleague echoes the same cry, almost beginning to berate members of the committee as if we'd done something wrong. Needless to say, a spirited conversation ensued, and I said then, as I say now, that this is wrong. Council is entitled to reject the recommendation, and the members are entitled to vote however they want, but the process must be fair, or at the very least, be perceived to be so. We took an oath, well, no, I took an oath to people in my district and before God Almighty, and the people in my district, and I don't always agree, but people know me to be fair. They know me to be passionate, assertive, a little boisterous at times, but they know me to be fair. To conduct ourselves in this manner is embarrassing and wrong at a time when the public trust is on trial. After years of nepotism, cronyism, favoritism, racism, exclusion, and glass ceilings, we have got to and we can do better. If we keep doing what we've always done, we'll get what we've always got. A couple of months ago, I said that I was concerned about the way this body conducts itself. Our solicitor admonished us to be mindful of our decorum and how we conduct ourselves while we're conducting county business. This is wrong, it's unfair to Ms. Gellner, whose name is embroiled or associated with mess, through no fault of her own, but because we, council, have once again acted in a way not befitting nor becoming this office. And I'm certainly no moral giant, and I can be a piece of work too, I'm sure, but I am fair. It's unfair to Mr. Logue, whose name is also associated with this messy situation, to be hired, as he undoubtedly will be, under a cloud of controversy, knowing that the manner in which he is being offered the position runs contrary to the rules of society. And now he's being asked to run an office whose very existence is predicated on the premise of fairness, the beneficiary of a culture that should have been done and away with forty years ago, a culture that has contributed to the overall situation and decay in this region, and has led to this region being impacted so negatively. Tony is a good guy, but sometimes being a good guy isn't enough. Tony's a great advocate, but sometimes being an advocate isn't enough. Tony is a great friend, but sometimes being a friend isn't enough. In fact, it should never be enough, not enough for me to stand here and compromise my values, not even for a friend. But far as Attorney Logue is concerned, I find no fault in him. He's a great attorney, he's a great father, he's a great friend, he loves the people, he's a strong advocate, he's all of the above. But what he wasn't was the best candidate for this position in the eyes of the subcommittee in accordance with the criteria that were set before us. We wanted someone to focus on county business, we wanted someone who would not be distracted by outside interests. More specifically, it was stated that if we don't necessarily hire a lawyer, not a requirement, but if we did, please impress upon him or her how important it was to note the problems in the past. I'm embarrassed. I apologize to Ms. Gellner and her family. I apologize to Mr. Logue and his family. I apologize to the citizens of Erie County for any part I may have played in this travesty of justice. I think Mr. Logue would do a fine job. I believe that this body handled this very unprofessional, and the citizens should examine every one of us going forward. They can start with me. You should search our record, and you should attend meetings. The good old boy phrase has been tossed around pretty liberally around here, but I now think that I understand, and I'm sure it's not just indigenous to Erie County government, but this culture permeates through other institutions and agencies throughout Erie County as well. The good old boy network really does exist. Imagine that. And this office is supposed to be the standard bearer. We hang our moniker that all people would be treated fairly, irregardless of their race, irregardless of their age or ethnicity, or who they love, or what their gender is. The cost to the taxpayer in terms of wages and pension and health insurance, all are items or questions that have been raised. I don't usually talk over another person's money, another man, because I believe that the Bible declares that a labor is worthy of its hire. But also in this discussion, we talked about compensation, and we had heated discussion on the $7,000 figure that you'll hear about later, and how we arrived at it. We had spirited discussion about how people should take what the job is offered, and how wrong we were for it. And it pains me to say that the new director will have $121,000 in cash and compensation, cash, not benefits. Now you're talking about healthcare benefits. But we argue about the $7,000 that we wanted to offer our candidate. This is wrong on so many levels. To make a hire in this manner without having sat down with any other applicants for the office, not having served on the personnel subcommittee or interviewed any other candidate, I think speaks for itself. I'm sickened by it. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Others who may wish to speak about that, you will have your chance when we get to the resolution, if you wanted to hold, but you're more than welcome to speak now, Mrs. Fatique, if you like.
I'll wait till we get to the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to comment on anything else or this particular issue at this point anyway, but like I said, you will get your chance?
Sure, I'll have something to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Rastetter.
Okay, first off, the whole idea for having the committee was Kyle Faust. The council did not choose the committee, he chose the committee, okay? He set forth the criteria before us. Extra pay was offered to Golder, is what they had reported to us, not Tony Logue. They didn't come down with three candidates, they just said, well, Maria was by far the best candidate, and we questioned that. I would guess that anybody would. And I don't perceive the procedure, to be honest, at all. I never saw any of the questions before Andre just spoke of them now. If those two candidates came into my office, and I've been an employer for forty years, I would have chose Tony over Maria because of the experience, and I'll stick to that. It wasn't that hard of a decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rastetter. Anybody else at this point anyway? Okay, let's move on, there is no old business, new business, possible adoption of resolution number fifty-eight, please, Mr. Smith, and title only.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
I would hope that you would read the resolution.
Sure, no problem. Read it in its entirety. That's a request from member of council.
Resolution number fifty-eight, twenty eighteen, approving the hire of an executive director for the Erie County Human Relations Commission. Resolved, the county council of Erie County approves the hire of Attorney Anthony Logue as executive director of the...
Can I read the old one?
Yes, but it has not been amended yet. Mr. Solicitor.
That was on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Read the one that's on the agenda, and it will have to be amended, if we so choose. Go ahead.
Okay. Resolved, the county council of Erie County approves the hire of Attorney Anthony Logue as the executive director of the Erie County Human Relations Commission, HRC. Be it further resolved that the individual chosen will be paid according to the Erie County Pay Plan and in accordance with all human resources department procedures, and based upon his qualifications, council will seek deplacement at step C of the fifteenth grade and budget for $7,000 in additional. Solicitors pay for the performance of a portion of the agency's legal work. Outside attorneys would be utilized for the remainder of the agency's legal work to be paid through the professional fees line in the HRC budget.
Also move...
Move by Mr. Leon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Mr. Leon.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that. Would you read it, the amended version?
Yes, sir. Resolution number fifty-eight, twenty eighteen, appointment of the executive director to the Erie County Human Relations Commission. Resolved, the county council of the county of Erie hereby appoints Attorney Anthony Logue as executive director of the Erie County Human Relations Commission. Be it further resolved that the director of the Human Relations Commission shall be paid according to the Erie County Pay Plan and abide by the procedures outlined under the county personnel code. Based upon his experience and qualifications, council will recommend his hire at step C of the fifteenth grade. Additionally, the director of the Erie County Human Relations Commission shall be paid $7,000 annually for services rendered as the commission's solicitor. Any outside attorneys utilized to supplement the commission's legal work would be paid through the professional fees line in the HRC budget.
Also move to amend it?
Okay, move to amend as read by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
I'd like to make another amendment, remove the word executive, and I believe that it should read "director of the Erie County Human Relations Commission." That's another amendment. I'll take a second.
Move by Mr. Leon, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And just as a discussion point, does either deny, or do you have the job description in front of you, just so we, that motion was made in the spirit of, well, we should have it titled as what it was in the job description, I just want to, I don't want to change it where it's not. Sabrina, can you just confirm, is that what it is, director, not executive director?
It's director.
Okay, good. I just don't want to change something that is not there. Okay. Okay, so that's moved by Mr. Leon, who was it seconded by? I apologize, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, so further to amend this resolution by eliminating the reference to an executive director would just be a director. Is any further discussion on that amendment and the entire amendment of the resolution at this point anyway? Okay, so let's vote to approve those amendments at this time.
On the amendments, Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, and not everybody was at the caucus. I indicated that I would vote yes on those amendments, even though I will vote against the position at the end, or against the recommended hire, to move this forward and to get this done, I was willing to. Those are basic amendments that I had no problem with. Mr. Horton?
Yeah, I move that we remove $7,000 for commissioners, solicitors, fee in any language pertaining to that sort.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Horton, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatique. Is there any discussion to further amend resolution number fifty-eight by eliminating the $7,000 annual, for $7,000 for annual services? Mr. Smith, roll call on that further amendment, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion regarding this resolution as amended? Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard in all of this process saying that it was a fair process. I hope that we understand, our old director of human services, if you consider that fair, then I think we have a bigger problem than we ever had. First of all, the guidelines set up for a new human relations director were simple. Salary at approximately $46,000 via the pay plan, five years' experience as an administrator. What happened? If this administration had gone out for a position, and they weren't satisfied with the salary that was there, they'd come back to this council and ask them to make the changes and give us the reasons why. What happened? Did anyone on the fine committee come back to the majority members of council and state that they wanted to change the parameters of this position or increase the salary? The answer is no. Nobody come back here. They, in their infinite wisdom, decided as a minority to do as they pleased. When I, and I'm certain other members of council, reviewed the job posting and resume sent, as one council member, I felt that they exceeded the guidelines. That committee now expressed how great they were, and they know because they spent the time and evaluated this process, and if you ask them, they will tell you what a good thing they have done because they did it. Who is to doubt that good things have been done when the doer of those good things also evaluates the good things? Wow, what a process. Wow, what a process. You know, I do agree with one issue, and I'm going to bring that up, and that issue is the additional amount of money. We said in the very beginning that that's what we wanted to do. And at this particular time, I would like to amend this agenda to remove from the word "additionally" in the agenda, which says additionally, the director of Erie County Human Relations Commission shall be paid $7,000 annually for services rendered as the commission's solicitor. Any outside attorneys utilized to supplement the commission's legal work would be paid through the professional fees line item in the HRC budget. I would like to make that as an amendment, and before I ask for a second, I'm going to state to everybody, this is what we said we wanted to do. Period. I'll ask for a second.
Actually, I'm the chairman of council. I asked for a second. Mr. Leon, if you don't mind.
I apologize.
I'll second that.
Well, before we get to that point, Mr. Talarico, we just defeated a motion to eliminate that from this resolution.
Brought it back up. I'm sorry.
Well, he was in the majority of that... Of that vote. No? Yeah, well, he was in the majority. So, I guess by rights, he's allowed to do that.
That, and if he did not, you know, if he initially did not intend to vote for the $7,000, which it now sounds like he didn't, then you could change his mind. So in both instances, you could have the re-vote.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like obvious... Well, whatever. I mean, it's his right to bring it up. So, well, he has a motion, and Mrs. Law, did you second it?
I second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. So, to further amend this, again, by eliminating the references to the $7,000, Mr. Smith wrote. Actually, first of all, is there any further discussion on that point? Mr. Horton?
Yeah, on that point and others, because...
If you... If you could, just on that point, because that's what we're... You'll have opportunities to talk about other things if you wish, but let's just stick to this amendment first, if you could.
I... I'd read that.
Just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, if, again, it could be looked at two ways. If Mr. Leon initially did not intend, and it's pretty obvious that he did not intend to include the $7,000 in his salary, then clearly he could change his vote. To be on the safe side, though, if he could also move... If he could also move, amend the agenda, to repeal in part the ordinance that he just... or the resolution that council just agreed on.
Well, I mean, we have a motion in the floor to eliminate that. Let's just go forward with that. That achieves the purpose of all you just talked about, at least in my estimation, so... Okay? Did you want to make any further comments regarding that particular amendment, Mr. Horton? Anybody else? Okay, so let's have a vote on that amendment, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
I have a question, because I couldn't hear everything. We are voting to amend it to remove the $7,000 fee?
Correct.
Or additional... All right. In that case, my vote is yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Okay, any further amendment... I'm sorry, any further discussion on Resolution Number 58 as amended? Mr. Horton? Oh, hang on, Mrs. Fatika, Mr. Horton got my attention first.
All right.
Just in terms of... I just want to rebuttal, because I beg to differ with my esteemed colleague. I believe that the meeting we had, where all of this discussion took place, was us bringing the subcommittee was bringing back our recommendations to you. And at that point, as previously stated, you could reject them or not, but what you can't do is say, "I'm hiring candidate B." And this is the second Personnel Subcommittee I served on pertaining to this office. And it's a... It is a failed system. And it shouldn't be three. It should be seven, because anything less than that is a dummy mission. And don't ask me to serve on another committee like that. I watched this process play out before, and we all had culpability. The commission, the director, this entire body. This whole thing is an effort to fix it. And so, we didn't come back and say, "Hey, here's who we're hiring." We came back and said, "Here's our candidate." And at that point, it was our nominee. It was improper. Good man and woman would just call it what it is. My father always told me, "Do something wrong, say it's wrong, and still go ahead and cash your vote." Don't stand there and justify that stuff by, "Oh, it was the pay scale," or "We offered her something." Because when you start talking about compensation, under the guise of saving the county money, and the new director's going to get a 40% bump in his pension on day one, he can work one day and walk out the office. It's like the gift that keeps on giving, and I love him. I love his children. Mother, father, sister, brother, I could care less, right? It's right and wrong is wrong. We're going to vote on all this stuff. It's going to all pass. But for the record, it's wrong. And I want to thank you, Ms. Myers, for coming up and speaking to that point, too. We need more people to come, to come down here and to raise their voice when they see that something isn't... Doesn't pass the eye test. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fatika?
Yes. I... My statements are not reflective of Mr. Logue, but of the process. And I am concerned that the hiring process was not followed by county council. If we needed to bring forth a second round of interviews for all of council, that should have been brought up, but it kind of broke the process. Council broke the process in the beginning. It appears to me that the principles of hiring 101 were abandoned in favor of a political appointment, and I will be voting no on Resolution 58.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. Anybody else? Mr. Leon?
To make a slight comment on that. This isn't the first time that we rejected what come back from a personnel committee. That I know of, it's three times. Okay? Then the last time was also on the Human Services, on Human Relation, I'm sorry, Human Relation Commission. So, it isn't anything new. Let's not fault anyone, because I do believe one thing. Committees should exist when you're doing any hiring of all members of this council, all members. My views are certainly different than other members of this council's views may be. And that's why I feel that any time you're doing any type of hiring via this council, it has to be with all members of council, not just with the committee. Thank you.
I agree.
Anybody else?
I agree.
I would tell you, I have the gavel, so I'm going to get the last word. So if you want to speak, you want to speak now. Anybody else wish to make a report? Okay, just I want a few things for the record. One, I do want to thank, again, Ms. Myers for your comments tonight. I appreciate you coming in and speaking, and I agree with many of the things that you said. And I stand by my comments I made in the paper today. I don't think that's really surprised anybody if and when they read it. That's the way I feel, and I don't change my mind on that at all. But just a few things I want to clarify. All five candidates were certified by our Human Resources Office as eligible to be interviewed for this position because they met the minimum requirements, all of them. All of them, including the one that's been talked about as far as administrative experience, et cetera. All candidates interviewed very well. The hiring committee unanimously agreed that Ms. Gellner should be recommended for the job. And despite the comments to the contrary, there was never any talk of taking more than one name back to council for consideration throughout the entire process. And I confirm this again with each member of the hiring committee. And that has been done before. I don't know why we would interview five people to bring back two or three names and just whittle it down by a name or two. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. One of the primary concerns and a major cause of the reorg was to find the director who would solely focus on the Human Relations Commission. All candidates but one indicated they would have no outside professional/employment interest. Three of the five candidates never received a call or an email from any member of council outside of the hiring committee asking about their qualifications, their views on, or their goals of the HRC. Each of those people deserve that opportunity out of basic fairness. What successful business just hires people from what they see or don't see on paper? Few to none. Two members of council did contact Ms. Gellner, but her summary of those conversations in the phone call she placed to me, she summarized those conversations as cordial yet brief, non-substantive, but they only seemed to be undertaken so that particular member could report back to council that they had spoken to her. Interestingly enough, one member of council did ask specifically about the outside employment concern that this council had, and Ms. Gellner confirmed that her sole focus regarding employment would be the Human Relations Commission. Yet that council member has indicated they will vote for Mr. Logue today, even though he has indicated he will not stop his private practice, which is his right to keep it. But that was not... Was one of the goals of ours, was to not have a director who would do that. In another call, I asked Ms. Gellner if she had a relationship, or a friendship, anyway, with any member of council, where they were... That member of council would feel that they didn't need to reach out to her, because they would basically have a pretty full understanding of what they could bring to the position, et cetera, as would exist with Mr. Logue. He's pretty familiar to all of us. He used to be our solicitor. She said none of those... None of that kind of relationship did not exist with any member of council. This, to me, unfortunately, and I echo again, and I appreciate many of the comments that Mr. Horton made, I don't think that surprises anybody that I would agree with a lot of what he said. This is another example of this council performing its work and conducting itself in a manner that I'm not familiar with. I know I've spoken, and you may get tired of hearing of it, but I'm not going to stop, that this is not the way we've conducted business in the past. It is not productive. If the public is to have confidence in how we do our business, decisions need to be made in an objective and transparent manner. I believe the hiring committee did that, and that's why their recommendation should have been followed. Mr. Smith, roll call on Resolution 58 as amended.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Uh, no. And did we... You know what? Did we insert his name into the... Into the resolution?
Yes, sir. It's in there.
Okay, thank you. Of all the things going on, I overlooked that. Okay, so Resolution 58 passes. Mr. Leon?
The only thing that I see is the specific resolution for the administrative assistants is I don't see his step or grade.
Do we have that available? It's whatever what the... What the pay plan would have called for.
Right.
Or actually, he gets to keep his salary, does he not?
He would be treated as an administrative demotion because of the restructuring of the office, so he would not have to take a demotion in pay, because we restructured those positions. So he would just be slotted in the step current to what he's currently making.
That would be step K in grade six.
What is it?
Step K, grade six.
Okay. I'd be more than happy to put it on. I have no problem.
Mr. Leon, would you be willing to introduce this resolution with the name of Wayne Harbison, then, so it can be read in the resolution?
Yes, I will.
And again, read the resolution as put on the agenda, and then we can amend as Solicitor Talarico suggested.
Shall I do that in title only this time?
No. Mr. Leon, it's your motion, so to speak, do you wish?
Yes.
In title only or in full?
Make the first one in title only, and then do the amendment in full.
Thank you. Okay.
Right. Resolution Number 59 of 2018. I'm sorry. One moment. I just want to make sure I'm reading the right one. Okay. Sorry about that.
I'm not sure how you could confuse, Mr. Smith. All right, I take your time. Make sure you have the right one. Start when you get it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Resolution 59 of 2018, approving the appointment of administrative assistant one for Erie County Human Relations Commission.
So move.
Okay, moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Mr. Leon?
I would move to amend it. Would you read it in its entirety, please?
And then a member of council can second it once it's read, if you could, please.
All right.
And insert Mr. Harbison's name as requested earlier, and it would be step K, grade six.
Resolution Number 59, 2018. I did read the wrong one initially. I apologize. The initial title should be, "Approving the Hire of the Administrative Assistant for Erie County Human Relations Commission." The amended title would be, "Appointment of an Administrative Assistant for the Erie County Human Relations Commission." Resolved, the county council of Erie County hereby appoints Wayne Harbison as the administrative assistant one of the Erie County Human Relations Commission, HRC. Be it further resolved, the administrative assistant one of the Erie County Human Relations Commission shall be paid according to the Erie County Pay Plan and abide by the procedures outlined under the county personnel code. Based on experience and qualifications, council will recommend the hire Step K of the sixth grade.
Okay, move... It has been moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any further discussion or amendments of Resolution Number 59? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
And this is on the amendments put forth?
Correct.
Yes, sir?
Correct. This is just on the amendments.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Any further discussion regarding Resolution Number 59 as amended? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, and I should have said this in the discussion. We made a wise decision to hire Mr. Harbison as the administrative assistant. For the record, I want to note that he was actually my second choice for the director's position, because he had, again, more passion and more vision of where the Human Relations Commission could go than some of the other candidates, and so I'm glad... And he communicated those things just as well in both interviews, so I'm glad council decided to go forward with that. And before we adjourn, I just want also for the record that I hold no animus toward Mr. Logue. He interviewed. He interviewed well. I wish him nothing but success in his capacity as the director of the Human Relations Commission. This is a department that I ran on and compelled me to run as a councilman in my first term. I think it's important that the county has this particular position, that it has this particular commission, that it works efficiently, and I will aid Mr. Logue in any way I can to make sure that that continues. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Council stands adjourned.